Supervisors on the phone, I believe. Matthew, you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me for a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move it.
Second. All right, any discussion? All right. Motion by Radick, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Passes four zero. Next up is the consent agenda. Items two through four constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Approval of the minutes of the August 20, 2024 meeting. The third is approval of claims. And fourth is from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, approval memorandum of personnel transactions and authorization to initiate the hiring process. I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes four zero.
We got asked for opposition.
Oh, that's true, yep. Any opposition, any opposed? Thank you Supervisor Reddick.
No problem.
All right. With that, we will recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Bennett, McDonald, Levy, and Wolf Creek Drainage District's trustees meeting. And for action, we have the approval of the minutes of the August 20th, 2024 meeting. And I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Benj, second by Taylor. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes four zero. And now we adjourn the Bennett, McDonald, Levy, and Wolf Creek Drainage District trustees meeting and come back to our Board of Supervisors meeting. Number six on the agenda from Secondary Roads is Mark Nara. And it's the approval of contract for propane for Heaton County Buildings for fiscal year 2025.
Good afternoon, Mark Nara, Woodbury County Engineer. Johnson Propane has returned the contracts for propane supply for fiscal year 2024 for Conservation Sheriff's Department, Little Courthouse, and our offices and facilities for the Road Department. Their bid price was $1.06 per gallon. I recommend approval of the contract.
All right.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by Taylor. Any other discussion or comments? All right. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Mark. All right, next up, item seven from Supervisors Jeremy Taylor and Mark Nelson. Direction for planning and zoning director to work with planning and zoning, the Board of Adjustment Commission, and legal counsel in order to make a recommendation contemplating decommissioning requirements as a part of a new ordinance regarding carbon pipelines. And I'll turn it over to Supervisor Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, the background of this item of conversations that Supervisor Mark Nelson and I had over the course of some time, and that really regards when something as powerful as eminent domain is used and placement of a new carbon pipeline is completed, then a key question really ought to be asked. After these technologies have reaped the benefit of federal tax credits and the subsidiary energy used, what is the result to the land? What becomes of it afterwards? I realize that ironically, this agenda item comes after the Supreme Court in South Dakota made a ruling that may make it prohibitive after all. But this is something that we ought to consider for the future. Should a pipeline ultimately be successful, a CO2 pipeline, then as we have with alternative energies of wind and solar, we want to look at the land. What is our land usage going to be for future generations, for farmers, for private property rights? And how are we going to leave the land in a spirit of stewardship better than we found it? Better yet, the question is, how are these companies going to do so? So, really, the 300 miles that were abandoned by Navigator, Summit's plan to expand with IUB commission approval, noting that it has to be successful in South and North Dakota. If that survives all of the lawsuits, what will be required? So, decommissioning, as you may know, refers to the process of taking a line out of service safely and permanently. So, we're currently exploring changes to decommissioning with wind energy. And why are we doing so? Because federal policy can vacillate. We have an election coming up. Depending on who's in charge of an administration and an EPA, those credits may be very different from time to time. Solar, wind, carbon, there's a dramatic effect on the land and the amount of concrete and pipe metal over thousands of acres of land. And if we don't do something about this now, 100 years from now, Iowa may become a spotted terrain of patchwork of rusty metal and abandoned energy projects, not just corn and soybeans. So, this agenda item really demands a fair process to ask these companies to restore the land to how it was found. And the principle that we are the people's representative at the county level. So, this agenda item asks for Planning and Zoning's Director to work collaboratively with Planning and Zoning, the Board of Adjustment, our county attorney's office, and even outside legal counsel to make sure that the process of decommissioning is well detailed, organized, legal, reasonable, and fair. Things like looking after the line, cleaning the line, addressing stability, slope and soil disturbance, monitoring in the future, and any other financial obligation, maybe even in the term of a bond, that could be held in order to make sure that that happens far after an abandoned pipeline is no longer employed for that company's usage. So, that is the overall aerial overview, kind of treetops of what we're hoping for. It would, of course, have to come back with a lot of input to be something that we could have as a standalone ordinance that would be something that could be considered on its own. So, those are my opening comments, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other supervisor comments? Or anything like that? Okay. Last week, I was at the Iowa State Association of Counties meeting, and two of our supervisor meeting, decommissioning for wind and for pipelines was brought up and heavily suggested that counties address this and begin looking at planning and zoning. So, I think it's very pertinent that we're doing this. But they were just concerned with what is farmland left afterwards, 30, 40, 50 years from now. So, that's good. So, I'll move it. I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. I thought that was the information line.
All right, motion by Benj, second by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes four zero. Next up, number eight on the agenda from Supervisor Mark Nelson. It's the information regarding resurfacing County Road D-38 through the city limits of Anthem. With that, as you know, Supervisor Nelson's not here due to the fact that his mother-in-law passed away after a long fight with cancer, so we wish him, give him condolences. Mark, would you be willing to speak to this?
I can speak to this one.
Okay, thank you.
How do we get it back? I think I pulled you. Okay, good.
Under development right now for fiscal year 2025, we're looking at resurfacing County Road D-38 from Mowville Blacktop to Highway 31. So, D-38, you can see there on the southwest corner of Anthem, that big white building that you see on that large lot is the Anthem Fire Station. So, city limits of Anthem lies just west of there. We initially contacted Anthem to talk to them about whether they wanted to have their roughly 14 hundredths of a mile from the city limits to Highway 31 resurfaced when we did ours and what the nature of that resurfacing would be. Our project calls for three to four inches of foamed asphalt, so we're recycling the asphalt in place and then putting a three-inch overlay over the top. We didn't know if Anthem would want to go that way. The foamed asphalt adds about, oh, probably about $10,000 for the project in that area. When Anthem started looking at this, they're also concerned about D-38 through town. And if you look on the east side of town where the river bridge is over the Little Sioux, that street comes through until you see the route that parallels the old railroad tracks that runs kind of northeast to southwest. Without a pointer, it's kind of hard, but I think you can figure out where it is. So, if you follow D-38 west and then come south, you go around the Senex Station that's there on the corner of D-38 and Highway 31 for eastbound D-38. They're concerned about the condition of that road, and they'd like to see that resurfaced sooner rather than later. What Anthem had approached us about was whether the county would be willing to pay all or part of that resurfacing through town. The argument that the city council has made with us is that with the right gravel pit being in that area, the map left us there. Is it going to come back? Okay, it came back. Gravel pit was placed, if you see those sewage lagoons that are up in the northeast part of the photo there. North of there is gravel pit. So, there's gravel that's purchased by Monona County, Woodbury County, and other entities that's coming down there, and then they're coming through the city street. The City of Anthem feels that's a detriment to the city street, that they're taking traffic that they shouldn't have to deal with. And they feel that that's county traffic and that we should pay a part of that bill. Our plan to do D-38 east of Highway 31, it's looking like about fiscal year 28 or 29 right now. But it wouldn't take much for us to add to the plans to take the resurfacing through town. The question would be whether the Board of Supervisors would consider any part of a cost share. And I want to preempt a little bit of that discussion with, as you know, for Hornick and Sloan and Smithland, when we did either paving or resurfacing through those towns, that foreign-to-market extension through town is a county road. The state code change in 2004 turned those foreign-to-market extensions in towns under 500 over to the County Board of Supervisors. So, Main Street in Hornick that we resurfaced and completed last year is a county road. It's not a city street. And we have taken care of the center 22 feet, the traveled way on those roads, for those communities when we've gone in and done resurfacing at no cost to the communities. If they want to have work done outside of that, they pay that share of the project. We tend to share federal aid with them if we have it. This is not a project where any federal aid is involved. We're paying for it with foreign-to-market money. Anthem's population is 535. So, while it's classified as a foreign-to-market extension, it is a truck route. They are not a community that's eligible for, it's not owned by the county. One of the things that those communities under 500 give up when the county takes over that road, they lose their road use tax fund dollars that cover that road. So, if the main drag through town that's a foreign-to-market extension in a town under 500 is one mile long, and they have a total of 10 miles of roads, they lose 10% of their road use tax fund money, and that comes to the county engineer. So, as time goes by, we build money that helps us pay to take care of those roads in those communities under 500. Danbury, Smithland, Cushing, Pearson, Hornick, Salix. Sloan is around 1100, so they're not one of those connected communities. Sergeant Bluff, of course, isn't, nor is Lawton or Mowville, nor Correctionville. When communities, when we're doing work through a community, we always contact them to see if they want to participate. I didn't feel there was any money that should be offered to them. They're not contributing to the county coffers in this case. That money is dedicated to the county road system. We don't ask property taxes for the road system from these communities. Of my own initiative, you'll never see me offer money, and you all know how I've been when we've discussed Mowville, when they've wanted to do frontage road there. I've always been hesitant to take that money that we're collecting and is destined to take care of the 1,340 open miles of road that we have outside these communities and use it for those folks who are contributing to our tax base. I know that Supervisor Nelson met with the city council, I think it was two or three weeks ago. That's why this item is coming to the Board of Supervisors for your information and consideration. I believe what they stated to him is they would like to see the county come up with about 50%. The cost of the project through town, if we do the foamed asphalt, which is grinded up, we add additional asphalt to the mix, it's laid back down as a recycled pavement, and then we lay three inches over the top. The cost of that from the west city limits to the east city limits is $249,000. For us to do what's called a mill and fill, where we go in, we take out three inches, and then we just bring three inches back over the top, cost for that is $210,000. And that's taking it from one end of the town to the other. It's roughly three quarters of a mile. I would very much hesitate to suggest that we use foreign-to-market funding on this. We are borrowed ahead in foreign-to-market. I try to stay ahead of what our balance is in foreign-to-market. The legislature occasionally discusses taking that away from us. And once it's down on a pavement, they can't take that money back from Woodbury County. So, I tend to run a borrow ahead, you know, usually one to two years. We're allowed to go up to three years. Right now, we're at about a two, just about a 2.5-year borrow ahead.
Quick question on mill and fill versus recycled. Is it like a five-inch versus three-inch total?
What we're looking at doing, seven inches total with the foamed plus the three-inch overlay.
So?
And with the other, we're just taking out three and putting in three. Where I feel we get the bang for the buck with the foamed asphalt is that we break up that transverse crack profile. If you look at the roads where we've done the foamed asphalt ahead of resurfacing, some of those roads didn't start to show reflective cracking for two to three years. And even as those cracks started to come on, it would be almost five years before we would see as many cracks post-project as we saw pre-project. Typically, we go in two years after an overlay project and do our initial crack sealing to hit those first cracks. Then we come back in two to three more years and hit the rest of them. Usually, the reflective cracking has generated, you know, those transverse cracks at that point in time. But, you know, we've still got good ride quality on those roads that are 8, 10 years old now, going back to when we started doing the cold-in-place recycling. So, you get longer life and better pavement out of the cold-in-place with the overlay than what you do when you just do the mill and fill. L-37, which runs from Highway 20 down to Danbury, that's at North-South Highway, that was one where if you drove it at all, you would have noticed that that crack profile from D-38 south returned much quicker than from D-38 north. D-38 north probably still hasn't reached the 50% transverse cracking that we would expect on just the simple mill and fill. And what we refer to as reflective cracking is you can feel in about every 20 to 40 feet, there will be that bump. Going through and milling takes away that bump. You have a nice, flat road to set it on. But that first winter, that crack reflects right up through that new three inches of asphalt. You immediately have to go in and do that crack filling. And over time, no matter how good a job we do crack filling, those cracks begin to roll over and give you that pump as you're going down the road. You've probably seen where our staff with the patching machine has gone out and filled those. Our guys are really getting adept at that. They're doing as good a job as a slurry leveling and doing it a lot cheaper. But I digress. I think what Mark wanted presented today was that the board would have the ability to give some consideration to Anthem's request. I think their eventual decisions on participation in the project will be based on whether or not there's any interest in assisting with that funding. My recommendation and request would be that you consider a different fund source if we choose to do that work through the town or participate in that work through town.
My one question I have is, when does this decision have to be made? When are they looking to do this?
This project is currently in the February letting. So, I would need to know. I think my planned turn-in date is early November.
When you say a different-
What is the balance of local option sales tax, because that seems like a reasonable approach?
I'm sorry, I missed.
Matthew's asking, what's the balance of the local option sales tax? Sales tax balance, do we know that? He just said that seems like a logical approach.
We'd have to look it up.
Okay. Can you hear that, Matthew?
Michelle's-
I got that.
Michelle's here behind me, and she said we could look it up and see where it's at.
Okay. When you say a different source of funds, are you talking about a different source of funds within the Secondary Roads Department funding? Or funding outside of-
No, I'm suggesting another county fund if it would be possible. You can direct foreign-to-market money to that if you choose to. But that's $125,000 less that we have to go to the rest of our road system. And just like in the case of Mowville, I hesitate to do that. The other thing I'm concerned about, and I express this to Mark, is that Lawton has requested that we participate in redoing Cedar Street through town. Lawton's a community of 800. At what point are you guys going to set the brake for participating in a town with paving? Or, and not participating in town? Maybe we've already crossed the Rubicon by helping Mowville at 1,200 people. You have the ability, if you choose to. I'm just stating, I'd rather see that money go into the rural area. You can spend it on the foreign-to-market extension because they're under 2,500 people. That's allowed by code. If you direct us to go that way, we just add it to our project cost. We bill them for whatever portion you want to see us put onto Anthem, and we go on about there. My only concern with it is that that's $125,000 that we don't have that goes toward a bridge project or federal aid matched toward another county project. And, you know, perhaps this is something too where the board needs to think about a policy. What if Sloan chose to say, well, we have a lot of farm traffic coming into the elevator along Old Highway 75? Maybe we should pay for that three quarters of a mile, too. They haven't made that request. We contacted them to see if they wanted us to do the overlay through town at their expense. They just asphalt overlaid it, I want to say, three or four years ago, and their pavement's in very good condition. And they chose not to, but-
So, I appreciate you looking at the second and third order effects, which is something that I thought about, you know, then what? And then who else comes for? When Matthew mentioned local option sales tax funding, does that have to be under the guise of the premise of economic development? Or we could use other funds? Because typically, that's been a necessity of trying to use those dollars as an economic development justification. Or is there other funding within lost dollars that may have-
Lost goes two places. I get 80% of it, 20% of it goes the other direction. I think you're right. It's always been tied to economic development. I mean, are we enhancing their downtown area by giving them a better road past their gas station, their post office, and the elevator that's sitting there in town? It's not new business, but-
Right.
How far do you want to stretch? That might be the challenge with it.
All right.
And again, I don't want you to, you need to take away that it is your option to spend money from the foreign-to-market fund or Secondary Road Fund in communities under 2,500 people. I was out in-
So, your preferences to the recycled, if you're going to do a project like that?
Well, if I were doing it, yes. If it was my road, I prefer to do the foam recycling.
Because I could see on like-
I don't know that we need to give, I mean, if the board decides to do it for Anthem, that would be a place where we could save $30,000 or half thereof by just doing the mill and fill in town.
Well, then they would get to maintain it, correct?
That is correct. Wouldn't be ours to maintain. I'm sorry, I was out this weekend in weeds, and allergies are getting to me this week, so forgive the cough, please.
So, no, not a problem. Maybe as a board, we figure like two-thirds funding if we do the mill and fill, but like 50% funding if they did the higher maintenance option. So, it'd be around like 170 versus 105. And then they would either have like 75 or 105. So, I mean, for them, they would make the incentive to-
Yeah, this isn't here for decision today.
No, I'm just, it's on their for discussion, so I'm just discussing what I think options we could pursue. I don't want to just pay for it all because they are getting road use funds, correct?
Yes, they do.
So, they can have some skin in the game in my book and put some of that towards it.
And they've already put $120,000, I think it was, into that road. They rebuilt the intersection by the community center, putting concrete in there this year. The reason they chose concrete was because of rutting problems with the old asphalt up there. They did a very nice job. It was a good project.
I zoom in there on my, on my own beacon there. Does that follow Fox up, then turn right on Main, then go up? Is that Miller? The bridge?
I can't, I can't quite read it from here, but it is that.
So, like here?
Yep. No, you went up 31.
Okay, so it's supposed to go here?
Yep.
This isn't even a road, is it?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Up there is where it would start. That would be where the project would start, and you're on it now. Sorry. Correct. And again, it is an eligible use of foreign-to-market money.
Well, and, you know, I'm not one to try to take money from you, but at the same time, I could see us using a mixture of funds, like 50% local option sales tax, 50% foreign-to-market. It's not as big of a hit to your budget where you had intended funds to go. And then, again, this is just my opinion. Maybe it's 50/50 on either scenario. But that's why it's discussed here in open session.
It's kind of like the bridge on Haskell Avenue. When you use the money in a place where it's not in our program currently, we bounce other, it affects other projects in the out years. So, again, I just want to emphasize it is legal use. And as far as making the cut on some of these, if they just lost 35 people, it would be our road. They're down from 610, I think it was, in the 2010, down to 535 now. It's really, I feel for the community when it's so close.
Right. Right.
But, you know, I'm a watchdog on the other dollars, I guess.
So with that, Mark, let me, I want to see if there's anybody here who wants to speak to this, to any public opinion, too, just for a moment, just, that was a good, thank you for that summary and information. We want to open it up. If anybody wants to speak to this, just informational items, just state name, address, and-
I'm Ross Baldwin, 209 May Street in Anthem, and I am a member of the city council, also a business owner in Anthem, and on the volunteer fire department.
My name's Tony McFarland. My address is five-zero-one South Second Avenue, Anthem, Iowa. Local, also work for a local business and married to a woman who has a local business in town.
And on the city council.
And on the city council.
Can't forget that part, sorry.
Mark, I want to thank you for your thoughts on this. It's nice to hear thoughts from both sides of the aisle there. I think, I'll reiterate what you said, that I know there's no decision that gets made tonight, this is just opening a dialogue. I just, it's my thought and the rest of councils is, we understand that there's that limit of five hundred people where it becomes collecting road tax versus not collecting road tax, when it's the county's responsibility, when it's the town's responsibility. And we fully understand that, but the one hang-up that I think that we all agree on is the amount of traffic that a town of five hundred and thirty people get on thirty-eight, not including strict farm use, where it is gravel trucks that are going through town that are conducting, excuse me, conducting county and/or state business with that gravel pit. And that's where we wanted to open the dialogue on.
Well, and I've also heard rumor that Sioux City, because of the high cost of the Crush Court site coming from South Dakota, has been sending trucks out to get gravel out on the east end of the county because it's cheaper right now.
Several, all summer long. The, I mean, the primary trucks, I would say, coming out of there were from Woodbury County, from the gravel pit all summers, Woodbury County, Manona County, and then the city of Sioux City had several coming down there. I think what makes Anthem unique, and every town can say they're unique in a sense, but is this is our one-way through town for heavy truck traffic, and with the gravel pit, that's your only way to get there. There is the new bridge north of the gravel pit, but from what I've heard, they've been instructed not to go that route?
No, they're allowed to go that route. I think it- The route choice for hauling gravel comes down to what they can most efficiently do. If they go up to the Mason Avenue Bridge, that's great if they're going north, but that's about a three-and-a-half-mile loop, and when you put that extra cost of haul, it isn't something that's welcome by those.
Right, that's not efficient for them.
Yeah, it is.
They're going south.
You know, that is one thing that does set Anthem apart a little bit, but, you know, we also have, as I said, Sloan with the elevator that's right there on the edge of town. Hornick has that as well, but again, Hornick being under five hundred, we covered it. It's, I'd have to think a little while about some of the other towns. Cushing also has an elevator, but again, they're under five hundred, and these folks are just over.
I think what sets Anthem apart, though, from the rest of these towns, though, is no one else is dealing with the heavy amount of truck traffic going through their towns, especially county truck traffic, as a result of a business that's there. I don't think Cushing or Danbury or Correctionville has to deal with the amount of heavy truck traffic.
Yeah, and if you recall, we did buy three hundred thousand tons of gravel from the right pit to take some of the gravel road improvement program that we're paying for. We'll have that gravel hauled in roughly the next two years, and then our pressure on that pit would be much reduced. We probably won't be buying anything out of there once gravel road improvement program gravel is hauled, but still, it is two to three years of wear and tear within our community.
Thank you, Mark.
You could almost build a quick apartment building on the west side of that purple line and just move like thirty-six people over there.
No, I honestly, I don't have nothing left. We just wanted to open this discussion. We, as a town, fully are aware that we would share in the cost burden. That goes without saying. Lastly, I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Yeah, if anybody else wanted to speak to this or any information, make sure we give plenty of time for public input. Okay, all right, so where's the data?
Thank you. I know that this will come back, and I'm sure Supervisor Nelson will be listening. I do like the idea that Keith put forward, potentially, maybe we come at this through different funds, where maybe it is fifty percent, sorry, of secondary farm-to-market, but maybe the other fifty percent is, as Supervisor Ung alluded to, through local option sales tax. And I think then, you don't have to have the burden of justifying from a purely economic development standpoint. We could say, well, it is going to improve in some respects on the city of Anthem, but on other respects, because we've had so much heavy county usage that it's incumbent upon us. So I do like that idea, if Supervisor Nelson wants to incorporate that when he brings it back.
Mark, what if we throw a big roundabout in there, and then maybe state safety funds would want to pay for it?
Wouldn't we make it up?
Oh, the roundabout, had to work its way in somewhere.
Please don't report that, media guys.
It's forever captured on YouTube. Once it's on the internet, it goes away.
That's true. All right, good discussion, anything else? Supervisors, public, okay? All right, go ahead.
Thank you both for coming down. It's nice to see council members.
All right. Next up, number nine on the agenda is reports on committee meetings. Any reports?
I don't know how this caught me off-guard here. So I had SEDC on Wednesday, which we just kind of looked at different guidelines and rules in how we approve loan funding. We didn't have anything on the agenda as far as loans to approve for SBA, but we basically kind of created new guidelines for future. Certs meeting on Thursday, we did get two of the new vans delivered for service. Neither of those two vans will be working Woodbury County, but it still takes about two, three months to get them out of the road. They got to get decalled and configured the way. Operations are going very good at Certs. They keep growing, keep getting a little better, so just always looking at efficiency and just trying to be the best organization it can be, so those are my two.
Okay, thank you.
Did you hear it?
Were you able to hear back there? My mic was off. Okay, good enough.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Supervisor Ung, any meetings?
Nope.
Okay. Only thing I have is I was at the Iowa State Association's and County meeting, it was great to see Michelle there, and the one thing that they stressed in the supervisors' meeting was just cybersecurity and making sure our infrastructure is upgraded with just the equipment and also the software to protect against threats. We had multiple agencies there from federal, our armed forces, and local internet provider, just internet service technicians, employees, just kind of stressing how counties are being hit with cyber attacks, and they just really stress that. And so I bring that up just to say that Woodbury County, we're in good shape. That's something that with John Malloy, that's kind of at the forefront of him protecting us on a good offense and going ahead, and so thank you to our-
And we have cyber insurance, right?
Yep, we have cyber insurance.
And that was something I brought up a few weeks ago, and on Certs, the agenda, we approved a new cyber insurance carrier because we increased liability coverage for a lot of that, but-
Yeah, and they talked about that, too, yeah, that was another sideline, but it was good to see that our county's protected and going ahead with a good offensive position and making sure we have good equipment and software, so that was a big thing. There was, they had an ex-CIA agent that was there that spoke, him and his wife did thirty years as undercover operatives for the CIA, and he spoke about just saying that cyber threat is a big thing, and he just encouraged the counties and our nation to make sure that we don't go lax on that, but take that as a serious threat, and so, yeah. But overall, it was a good conference, but that's what I wanted to bring up with that, so that's my only report. All right, moving on, number ten, citizens' concerns. Any concerns? Yeah, Smart?
Speaking of ISAC-
Oh, we turned them, you turned mine on. Thank you.
Speaking of ISAC, the County Engineers Legislative Committee came up with two proposals to address House File seven-eighteen that are proposed to be part of the ISAC legislative package for 2025, so I'm hoping the Board of Supervisors will support them. The first one proposes to take the secondary road levy out of the general, or the rural basic levy. So the rural basic levy, instead of being three ninety-five per thousand, would be lowered to ninety-four and five-eighths of a cent, and the secondary road levy would then be a standalone, not subject to House File seven-eighteen provisions, at a maximum of three dollars and three-eighths of a cent. Our levy last year was roughly a dollar twelve, to give you an idea where we fall within that three dollars and three-eighths of a cent. But that would then remove the secondary road fund and eliminate the facts of Section three, twelve-point-two of the code. The second proposal that I would hope the board would support when this goes out, usually they do an email vote, or an email, and then you can vote on the legislative package. The second one removes the provisions for freezing a county's foreign-to-market fund if House File seven-eighteen causes them to dip below the seventy-five percent. It requires the, I think the county engineer would have to file a report to say that, you know, we had been at seventy-five percent all these years, we didn't just drop it to, you know, for the sake of lowering our property taxes here, but we're not making it because we can't keep up with the growth in our revenue streams, so. Again, both of those are proposed for approval as part of the legislative package.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right. Any other citizen concerns? Yeah, come on forward, name and address and-
Hey, guys, it's been a long time. Taylor Goodwin, Sioux City, Morningside Avenue, fifty-one oh-seven. Sorry I'm here under the circumstances, but I just wanted to say I knew Dennis for a long time, a previous position, executive director of the Taxpayers Research Council. He spent a lot of time with me trying to get me up to speed, so no one knew more, but more importantly, no one cared more. And I'm not saying anything that anyone here does not know, but Karen witnessed a lot of times I'd drop in and he'd yell for me to come back, so I just wanted to say something, so thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Taylor. All right. Anyone else, citizen concerns?
Dan Priestley, zoning coordinator, I just want to update you on the wind staff review. We've been kind of working toward finalizing that, and I'll be approaching you very shortly, asking for some dates for the three public hearings. Kind of penciled in right now, we're kind of thinking maybe September seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and October first. We've still got some finalization to do on that, probably target for like a five forty-five set time, so anyhow, we just got some sorting out to do, but that's kind of our target at this point in time, so we'll get something on the agenda and try to make that official.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else for citizen concerns? All right, seeing none, nobody's moving to the microphone. Number eleven, board concerns?
I just wanted to thank Taylor, and I think, you know, with Dennis's passing, just didn't want it to go unsaid, that I believe that this county will do something to remember, and I know that Supervisor Bittinger and I have been working on something that could possibly memorialize Dennis and all that he did for our county. Very appreciative of Chairman Ung's words, I thought they were fitting and could not be improved upon. And then my daughter, who came from time to time, made a little bracelet for Dennis and said this is to remember him. That's the kind of effect I think he had on people. That didn't matter if you were twelve or thirteen years old, you were just visiting the county courthouse with your dad, you would remember somebody that would leave an indelible and lasting impression upon you, so just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other board concerns? Supervisor Ung, any concerns?